The Council of the City of Long Beach, held Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendo?
Present.
Councilmember Lester?
Here.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Here.
Vice President Fiamara is absent today. President Finn?
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Dan Creighton and Corporation Counsel Frank Decranis. We will now have a salute to the flag.
Please remove your caps. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to our second meeting of October. We'll have our City Manager Dan Creighton give his City Manager's Report.
Okay. So for my City Manager Report this meeting, I wanted to take a different approach and address an issue that many residents have voiced concerns about over the past week or two. Specifically, I want to give a presentation that will address the issues on the increases to the water and sewer rates. So to give a little background, bills are sent out quarterly and are based on water usage measured through the water meter. The bill is for both water and sewer as a combined bill. The rates are established and approved by vote of the City Council and are meant to cover the costs of water and sewer operations respectively. These funds can only be used for their respective operating costs and cannot be used to offset any general fund costs. So, next slide. So why have rates increased? As just mentioned, only water funds can be used to operate the Water Department and similarly for the Sewer Department. Despite increases in costs annually and a drastic need for capital expenditures, rates have not been increased. Where everyone appreciates that, as costs go up, goes up, fund balances are utilized to fund the shortfall. As many of us love to point out on frequent occasions, the fund balance is a rainy day fund that is meant to address emergency needs and not to fund operations. That being said, I'd like to point out, on that chart, if you could see at the bottom there, that blue line, as you could see, the water fund balance was decimated from a high in 2021 of almost $1.9 million to a paltry $355,000. I cannot explain why this was done prior to my arrival, but this is why rate increases were inevitable. So again, with only, next slide, with only $355,000 in the water fund balance, operating it, by the way, a deficit of $1.2 million, which is impossible to operate the water and everybody would be without water, just want to point that out. You cannot operate a $1.2 million deficit on $355,000 that we were left with in this account. Rate increases were necessary to pay the increasing salaries for 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation that requires licensed operators. So we have to have people that are qualified to operate the water and sewer fund. And I would like to say, I'd like to give a big shout out to the guys who are operating it because they do keep the plant running and keep water flowing to our houses. Pension costs and healthcare costs continue to rise as well as chemicals needed to treat the water. In the year before we got here, the plant operated again at a deficit of $1.2 million. It is not possible to do that again when the water fund was brought down to $355,000. Impossible. Finally, capital projects for water are also paid through this account, capital projects that were necessary but neglected for longer than would make me comfortable. So the next couple of slides are just some projects that are out there. There's no reason to go into all the projects. I just want to have this to show you the amount of work that's going on that was pretty much not done for a while, but very necessary in order to keep the water, the Water Department running, clean water running to everyone's houses. Again, I'll not go over all of these, but the need for investment to keep our water flowing does not even include the necessary upgrades, need to replace our water lines that are over 100 years old, 100 years old throughout the city. So again, on this slide, you'll see sand filter replacements, replacement of water mains on East Bay Drive. On the next slide, you'll see some other projects, including the Woks water main replacement. These are all funded through the water fund. New wells, new well repairs. Next slide, more water main replacements where it's failing throughout the city, we have to repair them. SCADA implementation, that's electronic monitoring and operation of the wells so we can function remotely and we could actually give us a chance to adjust flow and help pull from different wells at different times if there's any issue with water quality from any of the wells. Something that probably would have been done in the 1980s but still hasn't been done here. Next slide, there's a few pages, again, just to give you an idea of how much work is required to keep our potable water supply to all of our residents. Water meter replacements, alternative water source options are not even being looked at yet, but we'll eventually need to look and spend a lot of money in order to address issues if water, saltwater infiltration comes about. So there's still that money out there. Again, something can't be done on $355,000. So, going to the next slide. Let's talk impact, all right? Nobody wants a water increase. All of us up here are residents of the city and this affects us as much as all of you. But as showed in the last few slides, the operation is a costly operation, increases every year, and was running on a deficit, a deficit of $1.2 million. And we were left with nearly none of the water fund balance. And we've all heard how important the fund balances are, right? I mean, we've heard it in this meeting several times over and over, how important fund balances are. So the fact that we were left with nothing in it is pretty disgusting. Unfortunately, result of that is an increase, but how much? I will get into the detail and use the average household. So, you know, you really can't go over every single house separately, so we'll use the average household, which means about 12,000 gallons of, or less per quarter. And the reason I have that chart up is to show that, you know, the straight-up line is, there's about 5,000 houses use 12,000 gallons or less per quarter. So you see, it's really, I'm talking about most households in the city when I talk about the average. It's also important to note that since the bills are based on usage, the July-September bill, which is the one that's out now, will have the highest usage and thus be the highest bill, because that's where the usage is and your bill is based on your usage. Spring and fall bills are lower, but they're similar to each other, and the lowest usage is for winter months. So here's the impact to the average resident. Remember, water and sewer bills are the same bill, based on the same meter reading. It is disingenuous for anyone to comment on the increase in the water bill without also mentioning the decrease in the sewer rate. That being said, the average water and sewer charges per quarter for the last three years are fiscal year '24, before we hear $129.17. This is the average for the year, not each month. There's someone that are different, you know, and they'll be higher in the summer, lower in the winter. $133 in 2025 fiscal year, and $142.51 for 2026, that's the expected rate. For both years increased, the total annual increase on average, annual increase, is $53.36 per household, or 10.33%. That is $26 per year for the average household, funding operations, getting water to our houses, based on everything I had told you earlier, the costs going up and not really funding any increases over the years. And just so that anyone who disputes this can be comfortable, I want to make sure everybody's comfortable, especially all of our residents, I have asked John McDally, one of our employees here, to come with a computer that has access to everyone's water bills. I would welcome anyone who disputes these figures to go to him, and he will pull up your bill and compare year over year the numbers with you to verify what I've told you. I am confident that this information will align with your bill. So feel free to see him, or I could have it done in an open meeting. He's over here, his hand was just up. Please see him, he'll go over your water bill with you. So I just want to go to one last slide before I turn the mic back over to the council, because I wanted to update the public on the status of our general fund balance and the benefit of good management of our finances. As you all know, taxes from 2019 through 2023 went up significantly, significantly more than they have the last two years. A year ago, we gave a 0% tax increase, and this year, we stayed underneath the tax cap. And as pointed out by the council members, the fund balance correspondently increased year over year to 16 million in fiscal year '23-'24. That's on the backs of our taxpayers. We got the tax fund up, we did get the fund balance up, but it's because we paid more taxes, that's why. In fiscal year '24 and '25, we gave residents a 0% tax increase, and I thought it was important to share with the residents, and despite the 0% tax increase, the fund balance is projected to grow over $2.4 million, increasing the fund from 16.2 million to over 18.6 million, an increase of almost 15%. And again, that is with a 0% tax increase. Thank you. This shows that the proper fiscal management can be done without the burden being put on the taxpayer, but on proper management of the city. With that, I will conclude the City Manager's Report.
Thank you very much, Dan, and I appreciate the work you put into that report and the work you put in that we were watching up here. And I want to thank Ina as well, the Controller's Office, and the workers there, and your office. Thank you very much for a great job. I appreciate it. Good job. This illustrates a problem that we've been dealing with, that there's some fear mongering going on. People are banding about a 41% increase in water bills. I fielded a lot of questions myself over the last couple of weeks, and as Dan just pointed out, the 41% did not reflect the sewer. So the sewer wasn't included. He gave the numbers, it boiled down to approximately $18.95 for the median increase. So I'd like to dismiss that fear a little bit. There should not be a fear of, we're not raising the water bill to subsidize the low tax rate. That's not the case. The real problem is much deeper than that. These water rates have been increasing for such a long time, as Dan just said, that the cost of providing the water was increasing, but they didn't increase the rates. When they gave a 10% tax increase in 2023, they obviously could not increase the water rates, so they used the water fund to subsidize. They kept the price down for the residents, okay, we were grateful for that, but they decimated the water fund, which they call the rainy day fund, and no pun intended. So with the decimation of that fund, I believe what they said was, the excuse was, we're going to use the new implementation of the water meters, and that will generate the income to bring the fund balance back up. But the water meters were not installed during that time. In fact, they didn't begin the installation of water meters until Dan became the City Manager, and he got on that, and I thank you for that as well. So we're dealing with a situation where somebody made a campaign platform on high water bills and taxes, and yet caused the problem. And I think that's disingenuous. So I just want the public to know that we are in good hands with Dan here as the City Manager, Ina as the Controller. We have not raised the water fund beyond what had to be done, and it would not have been, probably had to happen if it had been managed better previously. In terms of fear mongering also, someone blurted out the other day that the city was facing a $19 million judgment from a lawsuit, which is just not true, not true at all. I don't know where that person came up with those numbers from, but I think it's important to not fear monger, okay? Let's deal with facts and not made up numbers. I think that with that, let's get on with the meeting.
Wait. Before we move on, I just want to point out.
You want to speak?
No, no, no. Well, yes. I just want to say, this is not the place to respond to political ads.
Excuse me, I'm not responding to any political ad. I'm responding to citizens who are asking me questions about water bills.
Because you said somebody's making a campaign issue.
Yes, that's what the citizen told me.
So that's what I'm saying. Look.
Okay, I don't need a lecture on that, thank you.
Well, everybody, well, everybody up here has to get elected, so they're part of campaigns, I understand that. But once we are up here, we represent the 35,000 people in this city, not, not just the people who vote R or D. So we, because if we're going to respond, in this case, you're saying a Democratic accusation.
I never said that word.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, then the flyers people are getting in their mailbox from the New York State Republican Committee should be responded to. Or accusations made by people, what I'm saying is, this is not the place to do this.
But what I'm saying, John, is that this is the time for the City Council to tell the people that people are making up numbers and making up, I don't know if you want to call them lies, but certainly they're going to worry about a $19 million judgment that doesn't exist? They're going to worry about a 41% water bill rate that doesn't exist? I don't want people to worry about that. That's why I think we have to stay with the facts.
Listen, I've been doing this longer than anyone up here. I get how frustrating it is, believe me.
I'm not frustrated.
Believe me, I understand. But what I'm saying is, then, we're opening Pandora's box to have to respond to every Facebook accusation, every social media accusation. That's not this body's job. This body's job is to govern the city.
Okay, that's what we're doing.
That's not what you're doing.
I'm going to make a quick comment, John. So just so you know, my City Manager Report had to do with the fact that residents are coming nonstop. I'm not responding to political accusations. I'm coming to deal with the residents, nonstop asking questions about water bills that have been going on. So this is no way political. This is a factual base thing on the water fund and the general fund.
This is in response to, there's all this stuff flying around on social media.
If I wanted to talk about what's on social media, I'd talk about the personal attacks on me and my family that have been nonstop, which I don't care about, which is disgusting and disgraceful, but I'm not doing it. I'm answering questions about the city and about the city fund balances, which you've made an issue multiple times about fund balances. And this is a very legitimate.
Thank you, Dan. So we're going to move on with the agenda. Let's go on with the agenda.
Finn, I'm going to speak.
No, you're not going to speak.
Yes, you're not going to tell me not to speak.
No, you're not going to speak.
I'm a councilman.
We're going to go on with the agenda.
Okay, so all of you people must be really happy to know that your huge water bill, it's really nothing. It's really not real money. Come on, you know, 42%? Do the math, if you can. Do the math. The rate went up 42% over two years. You can make all the excuses in the world, you know what? I don't know how good that's going to be on your pocketbook, all the excuses.
Is this a campaign? Listen, Roy, we're going to move on with the agenda. I'm in charge of the meeting, we're moving on with the agenda. Let's go with the agenda, Kerry.
Okay.
Public hearing number one tonight is an ordinance authorizing.
I'm still speaking. You're not doing campaign here.
I'm not doing campaigning.
Of course you are, you're just campaigning.
I'm responding to you.
These people are already voting for you.
Wisely.
Okay, let's move on with the agenda.
Okay, Finn, you can do your show.
Public hearing number one is an ordinance authorizing financing costs of planning for traffic safety improvements at the maximum total cost thereof of $239,824.
So the city was approved for a grant of nearly $240,000 to conduct a traffic safety study throughout the city. This is a federal grant with no local match, but is paid through reimbursement. So the city needs to outlay the money first, and this bond authorization would allow us to do so. We expect the final report for this project will be issued in April of 2026, so carrying costs will be nominal. We anticipate applying for grants to implement solutions stemming from the study when the window for those grants reopens in May of 2026. This traffic study will evaluate the most dangerous intersections throughout the city and suggest potential design improvements. Tyler Huffman and Patty Born are here to answer any questions you may have on this topic.
Okay, we have comments from the council. John?
Yeah. I guess one, when did we vote to accept the grant?
Right now. This is part of it, I believe.
Okay, then we might need to modify this because it doesn't say anything about accepting the grant, it's just the bond for it. So we might need to do an amendment.
Frank, can we do an amendment to something during a public hearing?
Can you do an amendment?
Yeah, before the public hearing.
Tyler, I was just going to say, did we accept this grant already?
Yes.
Okay.
Did we vote to accept it? Did we vote to accept it?
Yes.
I don't know when, off the top of my head, but.
But we did do it?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
200% covered.
No, 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 that's not the issue. The issue is, because you had said something early on that we were accepting it with this, and if that's the case, we needed to amend this. Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I guess this is going to be an Ina question. Since we wouldn't be reimbursed for any fees or interest associated with this, what's the estimate on what the fees and interest for this borrowing would be?
Hi. Good evening, Ina Rasnik, City Controller. It's hard to tell. It really depends on how fast we're going to be getting the reimbursements. So it's more likely than not that based on the timing and how quickly city needs to move on in, we actually will be advancing money from the general fund to start this project until we're going to be borrowing in February, because there is a fixed cost to just go to the market, and it isn't worth it to go for $240,000. So again, it depends. If we're going to deal with it quickly, let's say from November to February, we might never need to use this ordinance. But if we are not going to move on quickly, this might be outstanding for a year, for half a year, for two years, up to five years, right, as a short-term debt. So it really depends on how the work will progress. Grant works on reimbursement basis, so as expenses are incurred and paid, we can apply for reimbursement and get money back, and that's how we're going to be paying for the debt. So depending on how we're going to be managing that cash flow depends on how much we'll pay in interest.
All right, and you kind of segued way into, I guess, my next question is, why are we borrowing for this? Why aren't we just paying for it from the general fund?
We might not have to borrow, because we don't, that's a lot of money, quarter of a million dollars to just go, like, not have a Plan B. So this is an ordinance, it will allow us to borrow, but again, we'll be managing this based on the necessity of the funds.
Okay, but we just saw a graph that showed the contingency fund went up another, what did you say, 2.4?
2.4 million.
So I guess I'm still not clear why we have to borrow, especially if it's going to be reimbursed on a rolling basis, why we're borrowing money to do this.
I'm not sure what did you refer to about, like, what you said, you just saw.
He's talking about the fund balance.
The fund balance. You know, we were just saying we did pretty good last year, so the fund balance went up over $2 million. So I guess I'm not clear if this is reimbursable. I mean, obviously, the, you know, the sewer consolidation's a different animal, that's a huge amount of money. But for this, I'm not clear why we're borrowing this amount of money, rather than just pay for it and get reimbursed.
So this is on budgeted expense, right? So you would rather we, right now, this would be an unbudgeted expense. So I would not be comfortable, as the steward of the city's assets, I would not be comfortable to propose that we just decide that we're going to amend the budget and use, in this case, use the fund balance. Because grants, they're always, the ones that work on a reimbursement basis, you have a risk there, right? There is always a risk of not being reimbursed. So that's why when you incur expenses of the capital nature like that, it's more prudent for the city to divert the risk and to, if needed, borrow. And if this would have been done, this ordinance, this authorization would have been done before September, we would have borrowed for it in September. But just the timing of the project, from what I understand, it is such an urgent project and needs to be done now, that we have to have this ordinance, but we'll manage it, like, we're managing all the finances of the city with great prudence and making sure that the city will not be incurring costs that are not necessary, if not necessary. But at the same time, if you're not going to have this approved, if, let's say, something happens with the grant, we will not be able to issue a tax-free bond, and it will cost city more. So it's important to have this authorization so we can go ahead and start expensing money, and we will be assured that if the debt needs to be issued, it will be a tax-free debt.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you have a question?
Ina, you just said there's a risk of us not being reimbursed. So we're talking $238,000, something like that. And this is a study that I don't really understand, because my understanding is, we know exactly where the traffic problems are, exactly.
That's more item three, when we actually vote on the study.
Vote on the study, but this is four. Okay, I'll wait. We'll vote on the study.
Thank you. Mike, you have a question?
No, thank you, Ina, that was very detailed, I appreciate it. And I think when we get to, you know, we're going to get public input, we're going to get everybody involved, and we get to the point where we pick a consulting firm. And there's always risk with a grant, obviously. That's why Ina's, as she said, taking her Plan B. So I look forward to the conversations that we can have with the public and the consulting firm to make sure that we're isolating and discussing what we need to and what we know we need to talk about in Long Beach. Thanks.
Okay. Questions or comments from the public? I thank you, Tyler. We'll close this.
Public hearing number two is a local law amending the charter of the City of Long Beach, reassessment, levy, and collection of taxes.
So this item relates to how city collects taxes. Historically, anyone whose city portion of their tax bill was larger than $6,000 had to pay said bill in one lump sum payment. We heard a lot from residents over the past year that this was creating a hardship, so proposing to increase that threshold from $6,000 to $8,000, significantly lowering the number of taxpayers adversely impacted by this policy. I believe 1,670 residences fall between a $6,000 and $8,000 limit in city taxes.
Okay. Question from the council.
I just have to say, I've heard from so many residents, and I'm sure as all the members of the council and City Manager have heard from people, that this is a hardship. And obviously, we have to respect budgetary confinements and cash flow for the city, but being able to increase the threshold, I think is a wonderful thing, and I think it's very much appreciated by a lot of the residents.
John?
Yeah, and just in case people don't understand what this means, right now, the way the code is written, if your city taxes are more than $6,000 a year, you have to pay it in one payment in January. If you pay less than $6,000, you can split it into two $3,000 payments, you know, which is a little weird, you'd think it'd be backwards, the higher the amount they'd let you split. So what this is doing is, this is raising the amount to allow you to split the bill into two payments, which is a good thing. I just do have one, Ina, sorry, she sat down, just, back in, when we first started talking about this back over the summer, you had some concerns about the loss of interest that might happen, and you had given us an estimate if we had gone to $7,000, now we're going even higher. So we're probably looking at $2 to $250,000 loss of interest. So is that something then we'll have to budget for?
So actually, once, the devil is in the detail, right? So when I looked at the exact number of the properties that will be affected by this, the lost interest revenue will be under 40,000, 40.
40, okay.
So, I mean.
Because you were guessing 150 back in the summer, and so, and that was for $7,000.
I think, yeah, yeah, but there were, like, some properties that had, one by one, like, discretionary already brought to 7,000. So the true impact is going to be about 40,000.
All right, so it's something we'll have to budget, I'm sorry, they will have to budget for.
Yeah. No, I mean, $40,000 to me is also a large amount of money, so we will have No, I mean, $40,000 to me is also a large amount of money, so we will have to budget for it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Roy?
Dan, you said that 1,670 people between the $6,000 and $8,000?
Between $6,000 and $8,000.
And how many over $8,000?
No idea.
No idea.
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
I could get that from you.
I just, you know, we're talking about $40,000, not much. I don't know that it's much more for the higher amount. I just look at every other municipality, I look at the school district, everybody splits the taxes, and it's really beneficial. And, you know, yes, it's going to be, it's tough for somebody to come up with $6,000. I imagine it's going to be tougher for people who have to come up with $8,000 or more. And I don't understand why we can't just split the taxes. This is, like Mike said, this is a good step. It's a positive step, but the real way we should do it is, everybody should be able to split their taxes, like almost every other municipality allows. And we don't know what that would cost us, though. But, you know, $40,000 for this, you know, I don't, I don't know that there are many more houses that have City taxes over, let's say, $10,000 or $15,000. All right, anyway, I was just looking for answers. Thanks.
Questions or comments from the public? Thank you, Ina. We'll close that one.
Item number one, an ordinance authorizing financing costs of planning for traffic safety improvements at the maximum total cost thereof of $239,824. A public hearing was held. Item two, a local law amending the charter of the City of Long Beach, reassessment, levy, collection of taxes. A public hearing was held. Item number three has been taken off the calendar. Item number four is a resolution to reschedule the regular council meeting scheduled for November 4, 2025, to November 5, 2025.
So our next regularly scheduled meeting falls on Tuesday, November 4, which is Election Day, and a city holiday. So this item requests the council approve rescheduling the next meeting to the following day, Wednesday, November 5, same time, same place.
Comments from the council? Comments?
I know that this is relatively new. I looked back over a couple of years. Last year, it was moved up a day, the year before, it was moved up a day, the year before, it was on Election Day, which is usually what it is. And the charter does say it should be the first and third Tuesday. And we just canceled the meeting. I never understood why a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of meetings ago. And selfishly, I won't be here on the 5th, so, and I almost never miss a meeting, but you know what? I'm sure there's a reason. I don't know what it is, but-
In 2023, they moved it back a day?
Yeah, in '22, they didn't, you know, so on.
So, all right. Comments from the public? All right, thank you. We'll close that one.
Item number five is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to renew Barracuda email protection and backup cloud services software.
So this item would renew our Barracuda email protection and backup cloud services software. There's an increase of about $8,600 over the last year, which is mainly attributable to adding 34 new licenses to the system between the City and Police Department, as well as upgrading, upgrades to the system itself. Al Perez is here and better equipped to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Question from the council?
He just answered mine.
Okay.
How much it went up?
Yeah, that was mine, too.
But we put in 34 new licenses, and how many were police?
I, I don't know the count, which department, whether the City or Police Department, how many? I don't, I don't have that information.
So is it basically 34 new employees?
Yes.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Questions or comments from the public? Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
We'll close that.
Item number six is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
So as the council knows, our long-term City Clerk recently retired. Given his wealth of institutional knowledge and areas of expertise, we wish to retain his services on a part-time basis to assist our acting City Clerk and to ensure continued smooth transition. This transfer of funds from regular salaries to temporary salaries within the City Clerk's budget would accomplish that goal.
I bet you wish he was right here right now, but I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Comments from the council, besides mine?
I had his phone number, so I was texting him free anyway, but okay.
Yeah, you think that's free.
Well, he might be submitting a bill for that.
I will say, and this is not, certainly not on you, Carrie, because I think you're doing a great job, and, but he was, he was the man with the information, so we do miss him, but I think he's worth it. That's my own personal view. Comment from the public? Okay, we'll close that. Dan, where, Dave, wherever you are?
I'm sure he's watching.
Hopefully, he's flying through Florida somewhere, going to a Jimmy Buffett concert.
Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement for asphalt overlay services.
So this item allows the City to enter into a contract to mill and repave West Broadway between New York Avenue and Grand Boulevard, inclusive of the butt ends at the boardwalk at each road. The section was identified by the Highway Department as the worst section of Broadway. They also stated that making repairs to this area was labor-intensive and cost-prohibitive. We received 10 bids for this project with Metro Paving LLC as the lowest bidder. They are a new contractor for the City, but DBW check references, which all came back positive in nature. Ken Arnold's here, if you have any further questions.
AKA Mr. Saucewell. Questions from the council?
I guess just, yeah, Ken, just one. So I went and drove up and down Broadway a few times today. I was just wondering-
Which side?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, back and forth. No, I was just wondering, like, there are, I think we could agree, worse streets than that stretch in the city. What made us pick this one?
We also balanced the road resurfacing with the utility replacement program we have. West Broadway does not need any sewer or water work, which is why it was elevated to get done under the resurfacing program. We have other roads that need both done, all three things done, so they're under a different program because they're much more expensive.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I would put Washington, South Washington-
Well, that's what I'm saying. Some, we noticed some crumbling streets, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah.
You know, this one isn't as bad.
A lot of Broadway, too, a lot of Broadway, you know.
Because, like, Beach Street between Grand and, is, and New York is a complete disaster right now.
Yeah.
That's being done by the utilities.
Right, they're gonna, I'm assuming they'll do an overlay.
On Beach, on Beach Street, you're saying, right? Or, uh?
Yeah, yeah, because that, that's a mess right now.
On Beach?
Yeah.
Yeah, Beach between New York-
Right.
And Grand.
This Thursday, they're gonna fix it.
After that guy crashed into a whole bunch of things there, too. That was crazy. Linda, you add your hand up.
I brought this up when Mr. Farizia was here, the 200 and 300 block of East Pine Street. I think you all agreed that it was terrible. So I went up to Public Works the other day thinking that that was going to be one of the streets done pretty soon, and I was told that it wasn't going to be done till 2027. So if you want to look at a bad street that a lot of people turn down, that should have been top priority in my eyes. So I just want you to know that it's not supposed to be done till 2027.
I agree with you.
And that really upset me because that street is a mess.
I agree with you.
Not only is it bad to drive on, but it floods.
I believe we discussed this previously.
Yeah, so the road reconstruction program, the three main roads that we're looking at right now, East Bay Drive was recently approved by this body to start the design process. East Pine is the next one that's going to go out for design consultant services, followed by Riverside. So those are the three that we're focused on that were in the capital plan.
But again, that's, that's been put off at least three years.
I agree. I agree with you.
And there's a lot of traffic, so it should be, be before Broadway.
Well, I think that's based on, that's based on the project. Any other comments from the public?
I have a question.
Okay.
Ken, on, this is an overlay. This doesn't need to be, you don't need engineers or anything like that, it's just-
We did, we did the work internally, yes. So, so basically, it's a removing two inches and replacing two inches.
And how would Pine be different?
Pine, you have to replace the sewer line, you'd survey-
Oh, the sewer line?
Yeah, sewer line, water line, and the electric, all, everything gets done when we do a reconstruction.
Okay, thanks. Yes.
James Hodge, 95, East Fulton Street, Council, or Ken? Got a question for you, sir. So-
Did you, what, me or him?
Well, I said, Ken, your name is Finn, so I'm, I'm talking to Ken.
I'm going deaf, sorry.
It's all right, I'm gonna help you here tonight, but-
Thank you.
The thing about it is, I want to understand, you said, we know that a lot of people come, you know, every month and throughout the years, and they all complain about this street, rightfully so. They pay taxes, they all want their streets. And so the City had all of these comprehensive plans, and they saw what streets were, you know, from 1 to 10, and you said the highway made the decision.
No, I didn't say that.
Somebody just, if you, well, when you roll the tape back, it's going to be said-
I can read you exactly what I said. I didn't say that.
Well, it was said that-
I didn't say they choose the project. Keep going.
Okay, well, well, whoever said it, they said the highway made the decision, but Ken, did you make the decision?
Yes.
Okay, you had to think about that, that was too long, something was going on, but, so, so, so-
I never answer quickly. I learned my lesson.
All right, well, that, that took a minute. My point, my point is this, that it's people that pay taxes and they're all concerned about their blocks that may be in worse conditions, whether it's an overlay or a total construction curve in street, you know, I just think that it should definitely be way more information given out when, when there's a list of streets that are presented first for overlay and a total reconstruction, and then all of a sudden, a street pops up and get on there. Some people may think that may be, I'm just saying, some people may think that may be political favorites because that has happened in the years. I'm telling you, sometimes this street couldn't get no bumps, and then all of a sudden, this street in the west end, or this street in the canals get bumps, I'm just saying, over the years. And so now, I'm saying that this street wasn't on there, and now it's popped on there, and Ken had to think whether he made the decision or not, because he don't answer all the time quick, and I got you, and that's good. So I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we are making sure we're fair to the taxpayers that's been waiting, you know, to make sure their streets are overlaid because their cars and their axles and everything is bumping and jumping, and so I just wanted to make sure that we're giving the taxpayers a fair opportunity at the choice that is made, and that if it's not going in the order that has been designated by engineers, because from my understanding, the reports have been done by engineers, to scope out all of our streets and put it all in order from worst to good, okay? And so if engineers and people that we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars do this, and then we, as the City, just went over their decision, then I guess we wasted money for the engineer. We can just make our own decisions on what should go first. So you guys, I'm saying, because you're voting tonight on this traffic study, but if the traffic study is $200,000, and then you come and say, nah, let's do this, what's the point again, consultants? Thank you very much. Ken, thank you.
Ken, I appreciate your wisdom. It's, it's smart not to ask, answer too quickly, and I always answer too quickly, so I'll take a lesson from you, but I appreciate what you do for the city.
Many lawyers have told me that. Take your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, James, as well.
Thank you very much.
Question in the back? I'm just trying to figure who would be politically connected living on, on Broadway there?
You?
No.
No, I know.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
I just wanted to ask, because I saw that, I understand it was the lowest bid, but it's a contract that we've never used before. So what's the vetting process on, on deciding the contractor? You know, how do we, you know, previous work, references, what do we use to determine a new contractor?
Good question.
So in the general municipal law, publicly bid contracts have to go to the lowest responsible bidder. The department does a responsibility analysis and determines, is the contractor responsible both financially and by the quality of their work?
So we do check?
Yes.
We have references. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, thank you. We'll close that.
Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to accept a grant for the WALKS Water Main Upgrade.
So this item would authorize us to accept a grant of $1 million from the US EPA to reimburse us for some of the costs which phase, for the Phase 1 WALKS water meter replacement project, which was recently completed. We've been aware of this grant for some time, but it took a while to get across the finish line. This will reimburse us for costs already expended. Tyler Huffman and Ken Arnold are here, if you have any further comments, questions.
John, good question?
Uh, no.
Roy?
Nope.
Mike? No, I, I just made a comment about that WALKS Phase 1. I mean, I don't live in the WALKS personally, but I live close by, and it looked like they really did a very nice job from my perspective. I haven't heard any complaints from the people who live in the WALKS, so I'm grateful for that. That's my own comment. Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, we'll close that one. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Daniel Lampard, I do live in the WALKS, actually.
Oh, okay. You can answer my question then.
Just one quick question. Where's the grant coming from? Just curious.
US EPA, I think.
EPA?
EPA.
I didn't, is the EPA?
EPA, US EPA.
Oh, grandparents? Okay, awesome. Thank you.
No problem.
How was the job they did?
He, he had some issues with damage to his property.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Like I said, I don't, I haven't heard many complaints. Okay, we'll close that one. And, number, okay, sorry.
Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to accept a grant to fund a cybersecurity audit.
So the City has been awarded a $49,000 grant to conduct a cybersecurity audit of the City's virtual host environment to identify vulnerabilities and security threats. There is no local match required for this grant. Al Perez is here, if you have any further questions, and thank you to Al and our grant team on their continued success.
Okay, obviously, you have a question, Roy?
Yes.
First, I should ask, Ina, Ina, you had said before, there's no guarantee we'll be reimbursed. Is it the same with this grant?
Ina, you want me to answer? I think any grant that's not in our control, there's always a threat that we can't get it, the actual validity of-
Well, home security is different.
I mean, any, any grant is not in our control, there's always a, there's always a threat. I mean, that's what the issue is going to be.
Wait, did the government say that long? Roy?
Yeah. I know, but, you know, it was unusual for, you know, to say, you know, there's no guarantee we're going to be reimbursed, so that's why I was asking about this one. But the question is, basically, it's for our security, you know, making sure-
Yes, IT security audit.
Yet, we just, we just addressed Barracuda. And Barracuda, you know, it went up, and Barracuda's supposed to take care of all of this. I, I don't understand why we need the redundancy. Could you explain that to me?
Yes, the Barracuda's a product, so it's a backup technology and a security product. Is this on?
Yeah.
And a security product that archives emails and scans emails for malicious things. This is a security audit, so what it is, is a company that has very strong domain expertise comes in, and they scan your network, and they find all sorts of vulnerabilities that you have to remediate.
All right, let me just read you what we have as far as renewal of the Barracuda. The prescription, the subscription is calculated per year or per month and includes the following features: prevents threats, spam and malware protection, attachment protection, link protection, email continuity, account takeover protection, phishing and impersonation protection, domain fraud protection, web security, zero trust access for Microsoft 365, detect and respond, automatic remediation, SARS, XDR integration, threat hunting and response, automated workflows, attack stimulation, simulation, security awareness, and then finally, secure data, ensure compliance, email encryption, data loss prevention, cloud archiving, cloud-to-cloud backup, data inspection. And we're spending $42,000 on, or is it 42 or 46?
42.
On that.
Forty-nine.
And I just, you know, I, I mean, it's, it's nice that the Homeland Security's giving us a grant, but I just don't see that it's necessary. And, you know?
It's absolutely necessary.
I doubt Homeland Security's gonna...
It's absolutely necessary. And I don't believe the city's had an IT security audit in its history, and it's absolutely necessary, yes.
Maybe there's a...
And there are more threats than what you listed out. There are a lot of security threats that come up all the time. The, the software only does the list that you said, which is pretty inclusive. But, you want somebody to look at your security, your cybersecurity vulnerability from an outside point of view. There's vulnerabilities down to even staffing, policies, et cetera, that, that need to be looked at. And this is, you know, money that we're being given from the government. You wanna have a vulnerability analysis. There's always vulnerabilities that you haven't thought of or are not included in your software. You wanna make sure that those vulnerabilities are exposed, and you address them as you, as you expose them.
Which is exactly what Barracuda is supposed to do.
Barracuda is limited. Maybe there's a simple clarifier. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Barracuda is specific to the email system, correct?
It's specific to the email system, and it's specific to backup.
Correct, but of the emails and things, right?
Yes.
Where there's, the audit will do the entire...
Correct.
IT system of the city, which includes file storage. I don't know if it includes, does it include like the...
permissions, firewall.
The munis software we use and things like that, its vulnerabilities?
In, in some instances, yes, and some, no, yes.
Okay. But it's more, it's, it's a more comprehensive...
Network security, operating systems.
It's a more comprehensive security audit of everything, not just the email.
Exactly.
Mike?
Yeah, and just to build on that, Al, too. There were so many Fortune 500 companies that have been hacked in the last couple of years. Just do a simple...
About yesterday?
Google, yeah. Uh, Salesforce, Verizon, to name a couple. I think the UK Ministry of Defense was hacked this year. Um, so, especially because it is grant money, um, it's absolutely necessary to make sure that we're protected.
That's correct.
How long was Suffolk County shut down when they got hacked?
We were too.
Right?
Haven't guessed it.
That was a $25 million recovery.
Now, why would you be against it?
Do they, do they give us, uh, any type of, you know, like, LifeLock guarantees you to a million dollars or anything like that?
No, no.
How about a BOGO? Buy one, get one free? That kind of thing?
Yeah, we, we do have, as, as in stating, uh, we do have cybersecurity insurance. We do have that policy in place.
Can't hear a word you're saying, Eno.
Said the insurance is reduced because of these, doing these audits or whatever. It provides a lower security premium.
That's good.
Yeah.
They look for this, yes.
Okay, yeah, any questions from the public? Comments from the public? Thank you, thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the installation of new central air conditioning system at the Magnolia Senior Center.
Okay, so, this is another, uh, grant issue. This item will allow the city to enter into a $667,700 agreement, um, with Premier Mechanical Services, I'm sorry, it's a, it's a construction project, to install a new HVAC system for the Magnolia Senior Center. The current heating and cooling system is well past its useful life and has proven a daily challenge for DBW to keep it functioning. Just to bring to the, the council's attention, this was originally proposed as a $1.2 million project in the adopted capital plan. But, Ken and Stephen and their team worked together to get this down nearly half of that amount. While Premier Mechanical Services comes to us through the Suffolk County bid, DBW also solicited proposals from several other potential contractors, all of whom came back higher, at a higher cost than Premier. Uh, Ken is here with any additional, uh, for any additional questions that you may have.
Okay, John?
Yeah, just, uh, Ken, we didn't, they didn't give us backup, uh, material. Can you just explain what the project will entail, what they're gonna be doing?
Replacing the cooling power and the fan units at the Magnolia Center for cooling and heating.
Okay, how big a system is it? If you don't have a...
It was a 50-ton unit.
50-ton, okay.
Yeah.
Roy, you have a question?
Yeah. Ken, how many square feet is this center?
I don't have that top of my head, no.
All right, thank you. Mike, you have a question?
No, just a comment. I'm very happy to hear that you were able to cut it in half of our original estimates, so, good job to you and your team.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, kudos goes to Steve, he's a facilities guy, and this is right up his whip.
Yeah, if I can add to that, yeah. Our new city engineer did an incredible job. He looked at the design, redesigned it, and reduced the cost nearly in half. So, I mean, this has been an incredible pickup for the city to get a new city engineer that is that talented, so...
Thanks. A comment? Comments from the, uh, the public?
James Hodge, uh, just a quick question. The total, uh, is being covered by... A grant?
I don't know what your question was.
The, the total amount is being covered by a grant?
No.
No, this is a capital fund.
No, this is capital.
Okay, this is capital. All right, well, I just wanted to, you know, uh, say, as we continue to help out all centers, whether it's west end, east end, wherever the city-owned buildings are, uh, that is a good one. I, in working over two decades with the City of Long Beach, some of my tenure was in the recreation center, and anything that we can do for youth and seniors, it's always 100%. And if, I know it took over 30 years for, uh, the, for the MLK to get air conditioning when they finally got it, but it got it. And so, it's good that they're fixing this air conditioning because seniors in there doing exercises and different things. So, it was good that you were able to cut it, Ken. So, I got on you earlier, but I'm applauding you now. That's me, I'm fair. And I, I, you know, so, I just wanted to thank you, Ken, for cutting it. Who's the other guy that worked on this?
Steve Friedman.
All right, well, thanks, Steve Friedman and the staff for doing a good job, bringing it from wherever it was, to help taxpayers save money in the capital fund. So, uh, thank you, and keep taking care of our wonderful seniors in Long Beach.
I echo that, Ken, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the public? Okay, then, uh, we'll close that one, and that's it. Um... So, let's, uh...
Onto the voting.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna move, 'cause I checked with him.
All right.
I, I moved that we block vote and approve items one, two, and five through nine.
All right, and that's a motion to block vote, move, and introduce, correct?
Yes, one, two, and five through nine.
Who will second?
I will.
So, basically, just four is the issue, right?
Four and ten.
Four, ten, right, okay.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
President Finn?
Yes.
Okay. All right, item number four is a resolution to reschedule the regular council meeting scheduled for November 4, 2025, to November 5, 2025. Who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Since I won't be here, I'm abstaining.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
President Finn?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the installation of new central air conditioning system at the Magnolia Senior Center. Who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
We're being asked to vote on $660,000 of basically our money, and, um, it's a great idea. It's great to put an air conditioner in. I, you know, I don't know how badly it needs it, I don't know how big the place is, but the problem is, I've asked, I don't know how many times, to see agreements and contracts before I vote on them. And again, I haven't seen this agreement, so I'm gonna vote no.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Uh, again, just to, um, say thank you to Ken and Steve and the team for getting this price reduced, uh, just about by half. Um, you know, we have daycare, senior care at that building, and it's long overdue, so, yes.
President Finn?
I echo what Mike just said, and I'm, I'm grateful for the, the hard work that, that they did to get it down, um, and I'm voting yes.
Uh, the city manager's personnel report has been filed by the city clerk. Who will make a motion to close the meeting?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
President Finn?
I, I just wanna make sure we voted on the block vote.
We did.
Okay.
Yes.
Then, yes. Well, we, right, but we first did it on, on that. The moment we've been waiting for. This is my favorite part. Truly. Democracy in action. Is Frank, are you still here?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't see you come back.
I don't think they're here.
Did they leave? Did they, did they show up?
Yeah, I don't think they're here. Okay.
Hey, John McNally? Can you find out about the citation? Are we gonna wait till...
Um, they had, there was confusion on their end, it's not happening.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Ron Paganini? As they say, the first shall be last and the last shall be first. Usually, you're last, or right around there. But, the early bird catches the worm.
You never know. Ron Paganini, evening, gentlemen. I have two articles I want you to read. I have copies here. Maybe the clerk can hand them to every individual. There's two articles. One is by the, uh, Long Beach, Save Long Beach Island Organization. They've been fighting the, the windmills for quite a few years now. And they have suit against the, uh, the government on the approval of the, uh, of Empire, basically in Empire Two. So, so, the title of this is, "The Offshore Wind Plot Thickens, Federal Government Announces Intent to Reconsider Prior Empire Wind Two Project Approval." So, it looks like they're gonna try to knock it out. Now, if you read this article, it's unbelievable, they, the government at that time under Biden, they violated the marine mammal protection law and other laws, federal laws. And basically, everything's on hold. Now, you, you know, you gotta read the article, but the next article is about Trump. Trump, so, Trump, they found out about this, of course, because these people continually write to the government and keep them updated. So, Trump plans to review Equinor's Empire Wind Two, Empire Wind Two near New York. So, basically, if you read this article, it doesn't look like Empire Two is, is gonna go through. Because Empire One is, you know, they're doing a lot of work. Could they shut it down? They might be able to, but they probably won't. But, Empire, Empire Two, you know, if, if there was violations with Empire One, there's violations with Empire Two when it starts. You know what I mean? So, so, basically, it looks good that they will, you know, not approve it, they're gonna go over the whole thing. But, you gotta read the articles. And I spoke to the, the gentleman, Bob Stern. He's the president of the, Save Long Beach Island. Nice guy, he, you know, he has a lot of knowledge. And I told him about the North American Supergrid, about them coming through here, you know what I mean? With the cables that could destroy our water pipe. So, I sent him the whole thing, and his, and, uh, he wanted it, he wanted the email. So, he has that. And I just wanted to ask the council, you know, I asked, you know, to send the letter, again, certified to the governor, and all those individuals to be CC'd on that letter that states the dangers. And I'm just here to ask, how far you went with the letters, you know, and how far we going?
Yeah, I confirmed with our, our staff earlier today, it was sent out, so we just gotta wait for the, uh, certified receipt, return receipt request, is postcards to come back. So, I'll share them with you when they come back.
So, from the governor's office and individuals, too? All the individuals?
Yep, see, I told you, I got that to you, too.
Well, I'm the most serious guy that you should've sent it to. I thank you, I want it, anyway. But, anyway, thank you, because right now, the pressure's on. You read these things.
I was just saying, where does Trump find the time?
Well, you know, he's, he's unbelievable. And now's the time for the one-two punch. This letter with all these individuals are behind stopping this Empire Two coming through here, you know? And, uh, thank you, I, I, I truly believe you're serious now.
Oh, we've been serious, Ronnie.
I know, but this is more serious. You know what I'm saying?
You can see the red lights. I don't know how many people see them, but you see the red lights.
Right, so, if Empire Two starts, you know, you got another 90.
Yeah, right.
So, so, anyway, I appreciate it, and we'll, we'll see, and, and what happens. And thank you very much, everybody up there.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you.
All right. Julie Moran? Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Uh, I just wanna ask a question, well, I have a couple of things. Um, parking survey, how come that wasn't, um, sent out to each individual home?
Um, well...
So, it was put on the website for people to go out, and we spread the word that the parking survey would, we'd like people to fill it out, but why didn't it get sent to every home?
Because I, I know so many people who never even heard of a parking survey, but they did get the nice colorful paper about the progress report, okay? But, I think a parking survey is a little bit more important, okay? Okay, number two, uh, the water. I am grateful for you explaining all of that about the water thing. So, I think clarity is the most important thing here, okay? And please don't tell me who I'm voting for. It's my private business, okay? Number three, um, the water in the park, the water in the park, in Georgia Park, this might be a drop in the bucket, but that thing goes on 24/7. And no pun intended. You know, it, it's always, I, I mean, it's off now, but it was going on 24/7 at times, okay? Irish Day. This, I heard, said it was a great day, it was a great day, it was a great day for some. To me, I think they should take it off, I think this is an AOH thing, maybe, because it's not Irish heritage. My father is from an ancient city in Ireland called Drogheda. My mother was from Dublin, and my mother, my husband is from Kildare. All have amazing history, and not one little bit of history is shown on that day. I came down the street at 3:00 in the afternoon to a girl falling on the back of her head, couldn't get her up, she was so drunk, 3:00 in the afternoon, okay? The next thing was a young man sitting on a curb with two bottles of beer on either side of him, and then, a young man on the northwest corner of Georgia Park peeing in And then a young man on the northwest corner of Georgia Park peeing in the park while children were there. Okay? This is not a good day for us. We shut our doors and closed our, then some people leave. A lot of people leave. And the noise issue, I know you haven't gotten to that agenda, but I really would appreciate if we get somebody even call me to tell me what you've decided to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy, just so you know, I've been trying to get a resolution going to change the noise ordinance since August.
Okay. All right. I would just like, you know, the more and more research I do at wind farms, yes. They are bad for the environment. But so is noise. It's worse. You won't see seagulls flying around where there's noise. Okay? And it's just, there's, you know, I want this city to move forward. I am so excited that you're gonna have that bayfront. Why don't we have a marine study here? The only oceanfront property in the world that doesn't have marine study. A children's museum. You know, there's so many things. Solar panels. You know what? You go to Huntington, all the streetlights are solar. I mean, there's so much we could do. Thank you.
Pamela Payton?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Pamela Payton. I've been a resident here since I was born. I've been in the house that I'm in now since 1971. I, is that close enough? I was shocked by the water bill. And the explanations can totally go over my head. At the end of the day, I still have to pay over $350 more this quarter than any quarter in the past. Any quarter. My bills were running around $200, and this was almost $600. It's absolutely outrageous. I am on a fixed income, and I am a senior, and I enjoy all the things about Long Beach. And I am being forced out financially from all of the raises. It's not just the water. It's everything. Everything. It's my insurance. My mortgage has gone up because of the insurance. And there was a recent flyer by County Executive Blakeman who put out a notice that said, "We are preserving your generational wealth. Your house value is so high." Well, you tell me, if I decide to cash my house in, where do I then go? Because I couldn't afford to buy my house.
Well, we're trying to keep the taxes low. We're trying to keep the property tax down. Obviously, we went over the water fund to a great extent earlier. John McNally is right here. If you would like to go over your bill with him.
I would. I don't have time this evening. I have to get that. But yes, I would like to look into this further.
Yeah.
But I'm not expecting that it's going to be lowered.
I would just, I saw your post on one of my friend's posts earlier on today. So I did look up your bill. I'm happy to give you a two-second debrief.
Okay. I will do that then. And I also would like to say that you absolutely, Mr. Finn, did politic for four solid minutes in the beginning of this meeting. You absolutely did.
By talking about water?
And I do not appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Kathleen O'Leary?
Kathleen O'Leary, Long Beach. The thing I want to ask about is.
They're gonna yell. You're gonna have to move your.
Oh, this.
I can hear you fine. You're gonna move it up. Yeah, there you go.
I've noticed for years now that the clock on City Hall has been wrong.
You're waiting for the professor and Marty to fix it.
What?
Back to the future reference. We like to talk about it.
Okay.
It's right twice a day.
What?
It's right twice a day.
Yeah, that's true. But, you know, I understand it was, I believe, a donation from Assemblyman Wiesenberg a long time ago. But what is involved with fixing it? I mean, it, I don't know. It just reminds me of like a city that's downtrodden, that the clock can't even keep the right time.
Like Gotham?
Yeah, something like that.
I agree with you totally. I, you know, we've talked about it. You mean the one right up here, right?
Yeah.
Not the one on Ohio.
No, the one that's lit up at night. If it's gonna be wrong, I think we should shut it off.
I know. From what I'm told, it's extremely expensive to fix it. So we have to go with being right twice a day.
Well, why don't we take it down, then? I mean, you were doing all these improvements on Park Avenue. And I would think that if you're gonna.
Yeah, I don't know the cost, but let's get the cost to find out what the cost is.
But I actually, sorry, Brendan.
Yeah.
But I actually like, if it's wrong, maybe we turn off the light until we fix it.
Yeah, don't draw attention to it. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Dale Greenstein?
First, I'd like to thank you for speaking up tonight.
Excuse me? I didn't hear you.
I'd like to thank you for speaking up tonight.
Thank, oh, me?
All of you.
Okay.
You are much better than you have been.
Okay. I'm usually accused of speaking too loud.
No. You're the only one that speaks loud enough.
All right, thanks.
And there are many of us here, not myself included, but many of us, that are losing our hearing age-wise, an issue. Okay. If you look at the piece of paper in front of you, I indicated that there is a problem at my house. I have, no, I'm sorry. I had three signs in front of my house. Yes, they were political signs.
What piece of paper are you talking about?
Well, the one that you get when you get to call me.
Oh, that, okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry. We put it right in a box. All right.
Okay. Since 1985, I have been putting signs up, political signs up in front of my house. I figure I have the right, my house. This morning, when I walked out, my signs were gone. I'm not gonna call anybody out because I don't know who did it. But I think it's disgusting that people in this community think that they have a right to trespass on my lawn and take something off of my lawn. I don't even like when dogs are on my lawn, but you knew that. We need to send a message out. And I'd like all of you to do it. If there is an election going on, everybody is entitled to put signs on their lawn if they choose to. There are plenty of signs on my block. Maybe because I'm vocal, someone decided that mine should go. I don't know. But I know that it shouldn't have been taken off my lawn.
I agree.
So what I would like is for you to have the police officers that often sit up on Washington and the beach. Instead of being there, maybe they could travel around a little more and watch people's homes. It would really be beneficial to the citizens here. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
The last time I was here, I had asked you about speaking to South Nassau Hospital regarding the grass that's grown. Did anybody do anything about that?
Yeah, that's a design feature for the south end of the, I'm sorry, the west end of the structure. That's what's called a retention basin. That's the design of it. That's the way it's.
That's what you told me last time. Nothing else?
What would you, do you want me to?
I'd like it checked out because I can't imagine what's growing in there animal-wise.
I don't know what you'd like me to do about it.
I'd like you to ask them to cut it down.
Okay, I'll ask them.
Not, I understand what you're saying, the purpose of it. But it needs to be a lot less in height.
They manicure the area around it or along the perimeter? It's the actual basin itself where it's meant to grow in order to actually absorb the water. That's the function of it.
Is that checked out for vermin?
We've not had any reports of any vermin.
Well, I'm reporting it.
You've seen vermin?
I've seen rats there.
Okay, we'll ask them to check it out.
Thank you. Thank you.
James Hodge?
James Hodge, 95, East Fulton Street. Just wanted to say, you said a lot of political things earlier, and you pointed to this side and said, "Row, they're all voting for you anyway." You don't actually know who's voting for who. But the thing is that I asked you to vote for Row A all the way. That would probably help you out. But let me just say, because Row B Republicans, I haven't heard you and the city council members denounce and condone all of the things that those young Republicans said on the chat, talking about Jewish people. It may have been a party that denounced it, but did Mr. Finn put something on his Facebook? Because Mr. Finn on his Facebook called George Floyd a scumbag. He said Eric Garner, what did you say about him? He deserved to die or whatever. You said some things. Well, you said some things about Eric.
Excuse me.
Okay, so what did you say about Eric Garner?
One second.
Okay, cut my time.
Please, do not put words in my mouth.
Hold on, is my time? Let me make sure my time cut.
Do not put words in my mouth or attribute words to me that you think I would say.
Okay, so what did you say on your Facebook about Eric Garner and George Floyd? Did you call him a scumbag?
Who?
Did you call George Floyd or Eric Garner a scumbag?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll remind you, maybe on Facebook with your words that you still have on Facebook. So anyway, let me continue as you interrupted me. As I was saying, when we talk about the Republican Party, did you denounce what the young Republicans said? Do you condone what they said? They said something about Jews. They said that black people look like monkeys. They talked about women. Do you condone it? Did you, do you condone that?
What are you talking about?
Oh, so you don't know about it, just the whole world know about it? I'll move on, Mr. President. You are the president. You are on social media, and you watch the news, and you're investigating. I would figure you know. So let me go on. Again, I am saying to you, as the president of our city that represents everybody when you get in, let you be the city manager, let you be the president that represent everybody. When we see this kind of hate that is killing people, you sat here and we had a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk, for what happened to him. And rightfully so, because nobody deserved to be killed because of their political feelings or their ideas. But also, you didn't say nothing today when that young man said that Hakeem Jeffries should be killed and assassinated.
What young man?
Okay, I guess you don't know, or you don't watch the news. You remembering you hear whatever you want to hear, but I'm telling you. So a young man said Hakeem Jeffries should be assassinated. What do you say?
As I just said, I don't believe in killing anyone. I don't believe anybody deserves to die.
Okay, so that's really good. But you should denounce it and you should condemn it.
I didn't even know. How could I denounce something I don't know about?
Cut my time. You wanna go on? Okay, so let me get on to my last thing. A lot of people had different questions about what happened with the legislative seat. Let me tell you and be very clear in my last couple of seconds. James Hodge, I submitted my paperwork on time, not late, to run in the, to run to finish what Petros Kamitas started. He went into the water, which this city council and you as a president and investigator, you should be calling to see what's going on. I know it's the county's investigation, but it happened in our waters. It's a young man, 29 years old. If you care, which you say you do, then that mean what are you doing to give the community an update? Let's try to investigate. Let's see what's up there. It's been five months. So what I did was I submitted my paperwork, and I'm finishing off with this president. I submitted my paperwork on time. The Republican Party sued to keep me off the ballot and to keep Petros Kamitas, a young man that is presumed to be dead, okay, on the ballot. That's what happened. Again, the Republican Party did not have to sue. It is ridiculous and horrible that they want to keep this family in hurt and pain. But yes, they won the lawsuit. Yes, President, they won the lawsuit because they sued, and the judge ruled that he has to stay on the ballot. But they did not have to sue. I filed in time, but again, they sued to keep me off and to keep him on. It's horrible what happened to this family. And that represents, again, when we're talking about the Republican Party. I'm sorry, it was 40 days. You couldn't give someone 40 days to take this young man off the ballot so his family didn't have to deal with this? 40 days? You probably couldn't even want. We don't know. But why? Why is nobody speaking out about that, telling your own party? It's wrong. It's wrong what happened to this family. So my time is out. Thank you, President, for always indulging me, indulging me, even though I'm arguing with you and yelling at you, because that's part of this democracy. And so I invite you to come to the Democracy on Fire rally on Saturday. We're having a rally. You should come on down.
I'll just say that, you know, my prayers, and I'm sure the prayers of everybody on the dais here, goes out to that family.
We always say prayer. It's your actions. We pray, but we don't do nothing about gun violence in America.
I spent five years in the firearms task force. Three of my partners were shot and killed. Okay? I've done a lot about guns. Thank you very much. Your time is up. James Bangles?
My nephew was killed by firearms. And when you say something about firearms, yes, your partner was killed. My family member was killed. And so you, with your prayers, what is your action?
Your time is up. Sit down.
Y'all don't tell me to sit down.
I just did.
You don't have to, and I'll stay up.
James Bangles? James Bangles? Here you go.
James Bangles, 517 West Beach Street, Long Beach. I don't know if I can follow that as well. But just wanted to make a quick note, follow up on some, I think I came on the right night, on the right night, they spoke about noise topics. I guess I would have two points along those lines. The debris blowers overrunning our entire neighborhood the entire summer, beginning in, I guess, early April. I had to shut my windows, hoping I was gonna get some fresh air in the spring, but the leaf blower guys came out.
I couldn't agree more.
I mean, it's a circus out there. It's like the Wild West. My car looks like it was in Operation Desert Storm. It's out of control. This morning, it was probably a half an hour between my three surrounding neighbors with the leaf blowers, the lawn mowers blowing into my yard. It's basic. It has to stop. Like, we gotta go back to the brooms and shovels and pick up the shit that they're paying to clean up instead of throwing it in everyone's yard. I could go on a little bit more about it. It probably violates a lot of the air pollution and a couple of other city ordinance and stuff. But the other one would be related to the obscene use of the transport ambulances and the sirens. I counted 22 ambulance responses. I could tell from which direction, which side of the city they were coming from for five, 10 minutes before they even got to the homes that they were going to. I worked in the fire department for 23 years in the city. Still working.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no protocol unless it's an absolute emergency to be in emergency response sirens and lights, blowing stop signs, pushing people into intersections. You got tons of kids, elderly people, pedestrians, bicyclists, kids, you know, all summer. These things come ripping down Beach Street. They're not going anywhere. The people are stable. If they need, you know, advanced.
We've had the, we've talked with the police commissioner and various members of the police department regarding that issue, whether they're responding to an emergency or not, whether in emergency mode or not. There's difficulties with that, which we, not to go into it now, but we could go into it later and just explain a little bit. But that's the problem. I live near two nursing homes.
Maybe to clear it up a little bit, it only happened January 2021, when the whole COVID hysteria hit the streets. That never happened in the neighborhood before. Those transports always, if at most, they would have lights on. Transport, and they would not be blowing stop signs or red lights to get to South Nassau at the job site.
Yeah, right. I'm not making apologies for it. I'm just, or excuses. I'm saying it's difficult to, let's say, interdict that. That's not the right word, but to deal with that.
But we have contacted some of the transportation companies as well to let them know that, you know, what the protocols are and supposed to be and make sure that they're trying to enforce it.
It's just funny how they changed so abruptly, starting and it's continuing until now.
I didn't put that together. But, yeah.
I could get into that a little bit more. You know, there was a base transport fee.
Right.
Since COVID, it probably tripled or quadrupled at that point, and that's why there are lights and sirens still today.
Thank you.
If we could get some kind of common ground and some common sense on this.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment.
I just want to make a comment.
Roy, if you're gonna comment, we're gonna go through me.
I'm trying to get him before he goes.
You can.
Yeah, Finn, I'm gonna make a comment.
James, you speak and he wants to speak too.
The leaf blowers, I remember when I was younger that there was a prohibition against using them in this city, but, you know, I haven't been able to find that. But one of the things that was discussed was having them convert to the electric ones because, you know, I mean, it's still gonna be.
The gas isn't the problem.
The what?
The gas isn't the problem. The electric's not the problem.
It's the sound.
It's the no, it's the noise.
Yeah.
It's the dust, the silt. It's the, the stress on our water management system for the sewers. You guys are trying to save, what, 40 grand or something for, what were we talking about earlier? I, I'll save you 40 grand the first summer that you guys enact that when we don't have to pump out with those pump tanks, those fucking $250,000 trucks that are running around pumping out our sewers.
I agree with you.
You know, it's, it's common sense.
Thank you.
This is ridiculous. The kids, you go to school, my kids have been in West, the high school, middle schools, you go to the nurse's office, they got probably on the safe side around 50 kids with asthma or respiratory related problems, particulate matter in the entire state nationwide, as a matter of fact, is crazy, off the charts. You know, these, these are basic health things that we should be looking at.
I see it when I ride my bike and have to go past one of them. Some of them are courteous, they cut it off when you're getting there.
On a day like today, you could be as courteous as you want. 40 mile an hour winds, 20 mile an hour winds. It's the whole entire neighborhood has dust all over the place.
That's why they wrote that song. Sheena Curry. I love your hat.
Good evening.
You're gonna have to bring the mic down a little bit closer to your mouth.
Good evening, council members and members of the Long Beach community. My name is Sheena Curry and I proudly serve as the board of director of the MLK Center. I stand before you not out of anger, but out of duty. Duty to the community we serve, to the legacy we honor, and to the truth that must be told. Over the years, we have all heard stories, stories of dedicated community members who walked away from the MLK Center not because they stopped caring, but because of the environment became toxic and overwhelming. People like Ms. Andrea, who simply made a difference, who simply wanted to make a difference in the community she loves, were met with hostility, resistance, instead of, instead of appreciation and cooperation. This is not what the MLK Center was built for and is not what Dr. Martin Luther King stood for. That changes now. I will not tolerate harassment, I will not tolerate intimidation, and I will not tolerate bullying. I'm letting that note for the record. I will not tolerate it from anyone, and I will not be forced out of the center. I have put my heart into rebuilding. My role as chair is not a title, it is commitment to transparency, accountability, and the Long Beach community. Let me set the record straight. I am currently being targeted and undermined by certain officers on the board, not for wrongdoing, but because I insist that we uphold our ethics and our responsibilities. I joined the MLK Center board March 18th of 2024. I did not apply for the seat. I was asked to join, and I, and it took me months to agree. After a month of joining on the board, I was asked, I was voted chair with by the majority. On April 29th of 2025, I asked the, I asked for the resignation of the entire board due to serious deficiencies in carrying out the responsibilities according to our bylaws, the lack of knowledge of the daily operations of the center. Since I have taken that action, the dysfunction of the board has worsened. As of today, the Long Beach Martin Luther King Board of Directors consists of five members, myself, Adam, Simone Merchant, Marsha Gray, and Dan Crayton, who is currently holding a seat on the board on behalf of the accordance with our lease, also whom I asked. On October 17th, 2025, at 1:01 PM, a board member formally resigned, effective immediately. That resignation was accepted, consistent with two previous resignations. Hours later, at 6:22 PM, that same member attempted to retract the resignation without authority. Can I go on?
Yes.
Without authority to do so, not to mention, no mention was brought forth to reinstate that member, and therefore any actions or votes taken by the remaining board members after 1:01 PM that day are invalid. Governance matter, procedure matter, and when we ignore it, we jeopardize the entire integrity of the center. I also want to make clear, the center is not currently seeking an executive director, contrary to what is being publicly communicated by others. To recruit, to recruit and sustain capable leadership, we must first build the center financial and operational foundation. We do not have the funds in the budget to support a hiring at this, a hiring of this position, and I will not take part in Ms. Lee individuals seeking employment or causing harm to the center by this irresponsible act. When I stepped into the role, I inherit years of mismanagement and neglect, including tax and workers' compensation penalties, along with substantial liabilities. I have spent countless hours working with city officials, accountant, and legal counsel to work through these issues from the past administration, stabilize our finances, restore compliance, and implement a system to protect us from repeating past mistakes. Our center has become, our center has begun, began to build, rebuild community trust. We increased participation in youth programs, launched new programs in partnership with local organizations to ensure and ensure that our after-school program continue uninterrupted even though, even through internal turmoil. But sustainable process requires a board that leads with integrity, integrity, not division. My focus remains on building the system, clarifying roles, and ensuring all board members understand their duties to serve the public and not personal or gender. Before I close, I want to extend a heartfelt gratitude to those who have stood firm in the face of adversity. To Marsha Gray, your courage and loyalty has been a light in dark times. To the staff and volunteers, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for having my back. To Ms. Odom and to Ms. Anissa Moore, thank you for your wisdom and advocacy. To feel your support and dedication to the center is appreciated. And to Dan, your support and integrity remind me daily why this work matters. And finally, to my sister, my rock and constant strength, thank you for reminding me who I am and why I fight. In closing, to the Long Beach community, I say this. The Martin Luther King Center belongs to you. It belongs to the children who needs a safe space to learn and grow. It belongs to the seniors who come, who come for connection and care. It belongs to every resident who believes in justice, unity, and service. I will not be moved and I will not back down because the center, your center, deserve leadership rooted in truth, transparency, and for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheena. For a minute there, I was afraid you were gonna say you were quitting, so I'm so happy that you're not. Thank you for what you do, but if we have a problem, we have to fix it. The Martin Luther King Center is, is very important to the, to the council, to the city, and as Sheena said, it, it's important to all the residents. So what do we have to do, Dan? You know, we're, we're gonna have to.
We have to help them rebuild that board. That board needs to be rebuilt.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's what we're gonna do. So she left the room, but I appreciate her comments. Karen Ryskin.
Karen Ryskin, I wanted to give you guys some information that you may or may not know, and that is the land by Costco that was owned by Equinor has been sold.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Well, I, the signs are down, and I kind of interrogated the realtor and I got it out of him. So it was for sale by them.
I think that's a good sign.
The land over by Pops was also for sale. They didn't want to put a sign up for some reason, but they want to put housing in there. So I, they, I don't know what's happening, but from what I see, it looks like it's sold or they just took the signs down. I'm gonna look further into it, but now they have more income from it. But I was wondering, have you heard anything?
No.
Do you have any updates?
I don't, but I, you're, you're giving me the news right now. I, I was not aware of that. I know about Pops. I'd heard a rumor that Pops was buying it back, but I guess that's not true. That was a rumor, though.
I mean, I'm looking around, I'm always scouting for things.
Equinor and I are not really on speaking terms.
What was that?
I said, Equinor and I are not really on speaking terms. Ask Ron Pagani, he probably knows.
No, but it's your observations that are important. And there are newspaper articles that are very informative. I mean, even if.
Yeah, I know, but I don't.
It's not the best.
Okay.
Newsday's pretty good.
I don't know the answer. I'm sorry.
That's okay, but hopefully we get some information back.
Well, we're gonna try, yeah. We will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Eileen Hessian.
This is a quick one. I didn't realize it was Dale last week that had brought up the hospital and the weeds around that pond or whatever you call it. And I understand that they're talking about natural grasses, but there are natural grasses that look nice. You can get a landscaper in there. It is such a mess, but what I'm talking about is down the block, after that little pond, as you go east, they have very nice grass, all mown nicely, and on the other side, they have grass. But in the middle, right in front of.
On Franklin?
Like 400 Beach, no, on.
State.
State, state. There's a huge area that's tremendous, the weed that gives you hay fever. It's such, it's such a mess. It's so disgusting. And the people who live near that mess are the ones who fought for the hospital to stay open. And I don't know if they, if South Nassau did that as a punishment to them, because why is it beautiful here, a big mess in front of those people, and beautiful here? It's just a mess. I wish somebody would, I'm glad you didn't write the letter. I know Dale had asked you to write a letter last, I believe she did. But if you write the letter about this dangerous mess with animals and everything else, ask them to do the middle of the street too, okay? Thank you. Please, please.
Absolutely. Thank you.
It's not regular grass, it's actually water grass. And many people don't know that there's a difference.
Including me. I'm kidding.
Mr. Crayton, do you remember our conversation about the bulkhead?
Yep.
Okay, so I don't know if the rest of you know, but the beautiful, multi-multi-million dollar bulkhead that we have along the bay stops right after the tennis courts and actually goes in. In other words, it goes like this and then comes in.
By the hospital.
By the, by the, past the, past the tennis courts.
Right.
And then there's Monroe Boulevard, and it goes, comes in halfway between the tennis courts and the property owned by the South Nassau Hospital.
Right.
And there's a gap. So Mr. Crayton and I had a discussion about it, and he was under the, I'm sorry, he was under the assumption that that piece of land belonged to South Nassau.
We, we did look at it afterwards, Ken. I think we confirmed that there's a horizontal piece that still has to go in that wasn't put in yet.
I can't, I can't hear, can you?
I'm meeting with the contractor tomorrow to go over the whole Monroe issue.
Okay.
Supposed to be a return on it.
Because the issue was that there was this gap and no bulkhead-ing, and if we flooded again, that area would be destroyed again. So the tax plan, the tax map, the tax map shows that. And I did go up to Corp Counsel, to Public Works, and they said to me, they didn't know anything about it. So I'm happy to hear that someone is looking into it because it really could be a horror again.
That's a quick response, right?
Well, I'm, this is not my first time up here.
I know that.
About this.
I was out there during the storm as well.
And I'll be back.
Yeah. Hopefully I'll be here. Thank you. Christina Kramer. What's that?
You went backwards. You messed up, you messed up my strategy. You know, we're very strategic here. All right.
Everyone is.
Yeah, so I just have a couple of random things to talk about. I just want to thank Ron Pagani for keeping up on the Equinor stuff. And although I'm not here to complain about it, I do send you a fair amount of emails about Equinor best, things related to that. It would be nice if somebody just wrote back and went, email received, or we're looking into it. I get nothing. I'm not even sure my emails have gone through to any of you.
But we actually discussed it here at the meetings.
Yeah, but I, I ran from my, my cardio kickboxing to get here. You know, I can't always be here at a meeting, so I send you an email. I take the time to write the email. Somebody should respond. A simple response that says, I received your email, I'm looking into it. It's, I think, bare minimum. And then now I'm understanding that you wrote a letter to Equinor or in, I don't know about the letter, and you guys know I run Protect Our Coast, 6,000 people. I think I should have been CC'd on that letter, and I'm asking also if in the future, if you're going to write about that stuff, it would be appropriate, I think, to CC me so I can relay the message to the group, because I'm thankful that you're doing anything related to this. I, I'm in the dark here, and I think I deserve that for all the work that I've done here. I'm not saying you have to CC everyone, but if, at least me, I'll, I'll send it out to the masses, and we would show massive appreciation for that. The Hope Hogue Fire Department is actually doing something with their fire department, getting a head of future bests in their community, and I would love to send you the letter and have you maybe consider our fire departments, you know, looking into it. Yes, I know there's a moratorium, but moratoriums need to lead, need to lead to either banning or distance regulations. I want to thank you, because I, I just, this is all the way in the beginning, I was watching that, I came to that meeting when the, the budget was skinny and you were getting a lot of kickback for going on a skinny budget and taking a chance to, you know, tighten the belt around here, and I want to throw you compliments for that. You did the right thing, and you tightened up the belt, and it was successful. And I would just want to say, Dan, you are by far the best city manager we've ever had. We, I see you everywhere, getting involved with everything. You're always kind, polite, and engaging, and I just want to thank you for that.
I agree.
As far as the count, the election coming up, I, I saw.
There's an election coming up?
I saw the post about you guys not letting somebody else on the ballot. I looked into it, and I, my understanding is that the law states that that person had to stay on the ballot. I don't think that had anything to do with you. Can somebody confirm that?
It had nothing to do with me, that's for sure.
Like, you guys didn't do that. That wasn't done to anyone. It's just the way the law is. I, yeah, I also listened to all the candidates, get to know the candidates online, and I appreciated hearing all the information. Unfortunately, some of the questions I would have asked aren't there. I wish there was something like a town hall or a fireside chat where we can do back and forth. I think that's the best way to engage and really understand people. And Mike, I just want to say you've been a wonderful addition to the city council, and I wish you the best of luck, as I do to Tracy and George. Thank you.
See, this got your heart rate up just like kickboxing would, no?
Yes.
Thank you, Christina. And as a tag team, Tim Kramer. Come on down.
Hi, Tim Kramer, 361, he's Broadway. So I want to talk about the increased beach revenue. So, Mr. Crayton. So, Mr. Crayton, I understand that we increased beach revenue by $640,000 year over year, is that accurate?
I believe that's right, yeah.
Okay.
It's not audited yet, but it's, we're over $5 million.
Okay, substantial money, right? So, and we didn't increase beach passes, beach prices, correct?
Correct.
And so, we essentially achieved this additional money by retooling the ticketing process, and looking at everything and scrutinizing the entire process, and that resulted in additional $640,000 in beach revenue year over year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. So, I think there's an important component that we're overlooking that we're missing, and so, before I get to that, were there any laws that we needed to change, or add, or renegotiate, or, you know, renegotiate union contracts, or anything, was anything of that sort needed to change what we, the process?
No.
Okay, good. So, essentially, so, so really, I mean, not to belittle the achievement, but really, anybody could have done this, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
All they needed to do was put the effort in, yes?
Correct.
Okay, good. So, is it plausible to think that tens of millions of dollars in revenue were lost over the decades? So, had this plan been implemented four years ago, or 40 years ago, you're really talking tens of millions of dollars now, because this, again, is year over year, so if you take even 500, average at $500,000, and you multiply that by 40 years, you're talking, you're talking like, substantial money now, right?
We don't be drinking champagne here.
Yeah, so, and if you, if you roll that forward, and you say that over the next 40 years, because this plan is now built into the cake, we're not gonna say, oh, we're gonna go back to the old plan, so now this is built into the cake, so arguably, you could say that there are tens of millions of dollars in revenue that we are going to garner by having this simple, this plan implemented into our budget.
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, so, I think that's very important. And is it safe to say, Mr. Reinhardt, that similar results were garnered from the rec center, as far as additional revenues?
The ice arena.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the ice arena, so, so we had similar results there, maybe not to the extent of, with the beach, but nonetheless, the same. So, the point that I want to make is that I see a group, a city council or a group that is using our resources, natural resources, to expand our revenue to meet our budget, as opposed to raising taxes to meet our budget. And I think that's very important for the people of Long Beach to understand, especially at this moment in time, where it's election season, where you guys are trying to use, you know, additional revenue.
Please, I'll run the meeting, thank you very much.
So, it's very important that everyone understands that in a couple of weeks. And the last thing I want to say is, Godspeed for New York City. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Tim. I would like to add that John McNally, Dan Crayton, Joe Brandt, Ina, and Phil Regona worked extremely hard on this beach stuff, and we have a great staff, also Stacy Sweet works very hard as well. We have a great staff, and I think they should be congratulated on what they did, how hard they worked, and the changes that they implemented that resulted in creating revenue. I'm very grateful for it, so thank you, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
And on that note, we have no more contestants. Thank you very much for coming, this democracy in progress, and I think we do have an election coming up, so, okay.